All right. Welcome, everyone, to the San Rafael City Council meeting for Monday, November 6. Apologize that we went a little bit over in closed session. I will request the deputy city clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Present.
Councilmember Hill is absent. Councilmember Kurtz.
Present.
Vice Mayor Orange Galati.
Present.
Mayor Kate.
Present. Four of us are here. Thank you. We did meet in closed session at both October 2 and 16. And I invite the city attorney to report out.
And tonight.
And tonight, November 6.
So I have no reportable action to report out from tonight's closed session. I have no reportable action to report out from October 2's closed session. But the October 16 closed session, council provided authority and settlements have been concluded in connection with two actions that were pending. That would be, they were both mandate proceedings. Theo Emerson versus City of San Rafael and California Newspaper Partnership versus City of San Rafael. The Theo Emerson matter was resolved for $75,000. California Newspaper Partnership matter was resolved for $87,083.68. And with those settlements dismissals filed and those actions concluded. Thank you. Mayor Kate, I have nothing further to report.
Thank you. So, welcome. We are glad you're here if you're in the council chambers or listening in. And as always, we very much appreciate and thank our staff that keep our city running so beautifully day after day. So at our last meeting, we haven't met since the beginning of October, my remarks included a desire to continue in a hybrid format for our council meetings. But going forward, our public comment will be from folks physically in our chambers. It is such an unfortunate thing that the level of hate speech has risen to intolerable levels due to the ongoing Zoom bombers who continue to troll our cities and towns. And here in San Rafael, we pride ourselves on the rich diversity of our residents and we are committed to creating a culture of belonging where members of our community feel included, safe, and respected. I can assure you that the council reads all public input outside of the council meetings. We're here to meet with you and we look forward to continuing to engage with our community outside of the specific council meetings. I do have some somber comments that I wanted to include as part of the mayor remarks. I believe they're really important to include. Since the council last met, there's been terrible news in the world as well as in the United States. Internationally, a war has started in the Middle East. We condemn the Hamas terrorist attack that took place on October 7. We recognize the suffering of the innocent Israeli and Gazan victims and all others who are in harm's way. We acknowledge the pain experienced by local residents connected to the region. And we support our local community and want to ensure hate doesn't spread at home. On tonight's agenda, in fact, is a proclamation recognizing next week as United Against Hate Week. There's also terrible news in the United States due to the mass shooting that recently occurred in Maine. In the United States, there have been 565 mass shootings in 2023. That's more than there are days in the year. San Rafael continues to be an active participant locally in the Gun Safety Collaborative that's organized by the Marin County DA. And we will continue to advocate for gun safety policies at the state and federal levels. I believe it's important to mention these things that are going on outside of Marin County because none of us live in a vacuum. We read the news, we talk to our friends. And the anxiety and the fear and concern that we've been reading in the headlines affects us all. And I just want to name it and acknowledge that is in the room with us as well. And as always, we have some special guests in the chambers and we, I end my comments with a land acknowledgement that has been provided by the Federated Indians of Great Rancheria. And in addition to me reading this acknowledgement, the partnership continues with the tribe to take actions on issues that are important to them. I am delighted that Vice Chair Ross is here tonight to accept the proclamation of Native American Heritage Month, which we'll get to shortly when we start the meeting. So here's the acknowledgement. We acknowledge that the present day, City of San Rafael is traditionally home to the Coast Miwok people, many of whom today are tribal citizens of the Federated Indians of Great Rancheria. We thank the original caretakers of this land and honor their continuing involvement in stewardship practices that benefit us all. I will turn to the deputy city clerk to describe how people can participate this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. This meeting tonight is being recorded and streamed live to YouTube. And members of the public can watch through Zoom or listen in by calling 669-444-9171 using the meeting ID 844-3204-9611 pound. If you experience technical difficulties, please email city.clerk@cityofsanrafil.org. Regarding public comment displayed on the podium and the projector is a two-minute timer to help you stay within the two-minute timeframe. You're invited, though not required, to introduce yourself and say what part of San Rafael you reside in, or if from outside of San Rafael. We are offering closed captioning for this evening's meeting on Zoom. Select the live transcript button on Zoom to enable this feature.
Thank you very much. The first item is city manager and council member reports. I will turn to the city manager.
Good evening, Mayor Kate. Council members in the community, I have a couple of announcements to make. One, just a reminder, City Hall and city facilities will be closed and observance of Veterans Day this Friday, the 10th. I went to a really special event today that I wanted to share with all of you. It's called the Seeds of Hope Community Event at our B Street San Rafael Community Center. And I wanted to call out in particular, appreciate Lynn Murphy from our mental health outreach worker from the police department who's spearheaded this along with the county. And it's an incredibly impressive event. There were 23 service providers there today. They're doing this quarterly. Marin Humane Society is there providing veterinary services. Ritter's there with a medical van. People are getting haircuts and massage, acupuncture, case management resources. Our library was there. Our community development staff were serving food today. And it's a really special event. Over 200 community members were served just today there. On the 5th of February, there's another luncheon from 11 to 1:00. And Kaiser will be there to provide flu shots and vaccines and more medical supplies and services. So it's a real team effort on a lot of city staff's part. And it's really special, so I wanted to share it with you. We also received an award. San Rafael is named the fourth on the SMU Data Arts Top 40 Arts Vibrant Communities for 2023, which recognizes and celebrates the most arts vibrant communities across the United States, which we are one of only 14 designated state art districts. So that's something to celebrate. I also wanted to let everyone know that there's an event tomorrow night, the Marin County Office of Education and OD Free Marin is putting on a screening of Drugs in the Age of Fentanyl, film screening and panel discussion, really important event. Just wanted to share that in case anybody can attend. It's at Los Galinas Avenue in person at the Marin County Office of Education. I also wanted to give a shout out to Marin County, whose participatory budget and equity project is allocating $2.5 million directly to public projects that were sourced and being voted on by the community real time. So the ballot, the ballot is open. You can go to pb.marincounty.org. Anyone in Marin County can vote either online or in person. They're going to have some other in-person events. So if you go to their website, you can find out more information. And then lastly, this weekend on Friday night, Youth and Arts has their special event from 5 to 7:00. They're hosting an artist reception for their Teaching Artist Show opening. There'll be talent and performances from Till Dawn, which is the local youth acapella group. And there'll be other interactive activities like creating United Against Hate posters. It's open to the public, so you can stop by at 917 C Street at Youth and Arts on Friday night. That's all I had for tonight.
Thank you so much. I'll turn to my colleagues, Vice Mayor Yoren Scalati.
Thank you, Mayor. And it's been, I guess, we have a few reports because we did have some closed session meetings, but we didn't have like public meetings. So I'll start with the PAC committee meetings and selections. This is the Police Accountability Advisory Committee. And we have over 30 applicants. We did over 30 interviews and then we finally went down and selected nine community members to be part of this committee. So I really want to appreciate actually our team for organizing it, like our city clerk as well, but also to all the applicants. It was a really hard decision. We had like really, really good applicants. So it's always really nice to see how many qualified people and so caring that we have in our community. So, and we also had actually interviews for other committees. So it was, it was busy around this month around that. I also participated for the East San Rafael businesses with the Board of Supervisor Dennis Rodoni. Thank you, the Chamber of Commerce for putting this event together. Stephanie Plant from CPI for chairing and also for hosting. It was a great conversation. I just a reminder, over 60% of our revenue from businesses comes from the East San Rafael businesses. So I really, really appreciate them all. Also attended our monthly board meeting with MCE and participated in the Mill Valley Film Festival. And what a great event they put together. So it was really nice to see our, like the closing party was actually in downtown San Rafael. And it was, I'm very thankful to CFI for selecting San Rafael and also to the entire San Rafael team for making it possible because I know there was a lot of logistics. Also met with Chief Spiller and Captain Leon with Bosses del Canal. So that was like a great community meeting and definitely more to come on improvements and feedback that we are hearing from the community. I have three more. So participated in the Women of Industry Awards. And I believe Councilmember Kurtz was there as well. And yes, and it was, it was a great event. Again, thank you, the San Rafael Chamber of Commerce for putting it together. Big recognition for Joanne Webster, who is now the former executive director or the CEO of the Chamber of Commerce. So I really look forward to working with the new executive director, but also see Joanne Webster in her new role and the North Bay Council. And attended a Baywave meeting with Mayor Kate. And then I'm closing with one of my favorite events of the year, which is the Dia de los Muertos in the Canal on Saturday. It was so amazing seeing so many community members, the food, the different cultures, all the different altars. And especially, thank you to Multicultural Center and our very own Steve Mason and the entire team from the City of San Rafael. It was a huge, huge event and then all the community partners. But it was, it was just, it really warmed my heart. It was an amazing event. So that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. A month's worth right there. Councilmember Kurtz.
Sure, I'll just add on a couple of items. Did a river, ribbon cutting at the Exchange Bank for San Rafael Chamber, which was nice. It's a new branch that they're opening up for their investment services in the Redwood Highway area. So that's good. Participated in the PAC interviews, as was mentioned, and MCCMC meeting where we had an update from Assembly Member Conley on the latest initiatives that he's been working on, as well as asking for input on new initiatives. And I think that covers.
Thank you. Councilmember Bushy.
Okay. I'll start with something fun. The Mill Valley Film Festival was really, it was, I was so proud of Forest Street. It just looked great. It was, it was a pleasure to attend that with a council member, Vice Mayor, I'm sorry. Oh, Lawrence Galati, sorry. And of course, did the PAC interviews and the interviews for the other boards and commissions across the boards, getting incredible applicants, just lots of quality there, tough decisions for us to make, which we're happy to be in that position. Moving on to the San Rafael Sanitation District, I'm attended a board meeting with Mayor Kate. We received our annual financial reports there, which were approved. We also had a closed session on our strategic plan. And so standby, we've got big things coming for SR Sand, which segues nicely into the Central Marin Sanitation Agency. I also attended their monthly board meeting. We had routine equipment maintenance projects, all of which are how you keep that plant working. You just keep moving those, those routine items through. Switching gears to transit, I attended the Transportation Authority of Marin's board meeting in the place of the mayor. There was actually a two-part meeting. There was a visioning session for their strategic plan. There was an article about that in the, in the IJ. I think it's safe to say overall that people are open to things other than building new roads as ways to manage congestion. So be very interesting to see how that strategic plan unfolds. There's also a regular meeting with and received routine reports. Then also attended the Marin Transit Board. That meeting was today. We had, we received our annual financial report. The budget is, it is within budget and meeting its requirements. We also received reports on the service metrics. I'm very proud to say that Route 35, our, our big route is meeting all of its metrics. That is ridership wise, as well as subsidy per rider. There are several other routes in the county that are not meeting those metrics. And the Marin Transit Agency will be focusing on how, what adjustments are necessary for those routes. Finally, last Saturday, with, with the mayor, I'm attended the Point San Pedro Road Coalition's annual meeting. Was very proud of our Assistant City Manager, John Tufansky, and Kate Hegeman, who made presentations and really were the best in, best in class, I thought, for the day. So thank you for, for attending that meeting and bringing all those issues forward. And finally, on the MCCMC front, I'm attended the meeting in Novato with Councilmember Kurtz and also representing the MCCMC Water Committee, attended the quarterly meeting of water managers in, for Marin County. And just to remind everyone, it's not just Marin, Marin Municipal Water District. There are like half a dozen very small water companies along the coast that have very urgent matters, very interesting, interesting reports and how they're handling them. And that's what I did last month.
And I'll add to the growing list. So as you know, I'm your representative on SMART, this No More Marin Area Rapid Transit. Ridership continues to increase in October. It was trending 9% higher in October of 2023 than 2019. And that's important because obviously that was prior to the pandemic coming along. SMART is upgrading to LED lighting. It's not only more efficient, but it has great light. The stations are done and as well as the parking lots and the paths will be completed, are finally being completed. And the pathway continues to see, let me see, in, in September, there were 67,000 people that used the path. That's not the train, but the path, because that was obviously the other part of SMART. And it pretty much split between pedestrians and walkers, I'm sorry, pedestrians and cyclists. And it's, there are two more miles of pathways. So really getting a lot of use out of that path. Early in October, Saferoots School had their walk enroll, which is so fun. I was at Sun Valley greeting students as they walk enrolled into their classrooms. We had Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee. I was able to attend that. And we talked about the revise or kind of update, the refreshing of our current VPAC as well as AV43, which has to do with speed studies. So if you're interested, if you're watching this and you're interested in mobility around San Rafael, do get involved in VPAC. We'll be having more conversations there. As you may or may not know, there's been some issues of homeless encampments down by Davidson Middle School. And in response, we co-hosted with the school a webinar that's posted on our city webpage. You can just go to the city webpage, type in. You can just go to the city webpage, type in the word homeless in the, uh, search bar, and you can scroll down and watch the, watch the webinars. About forty-five minutes long. And we really provided a context as well as answered questions that many parents have had regarding encampments and what the city can and cannot do. Um, I was honored to be invited to the Marin Realtors Government Affairs, as we know. Um, Realtors are a big part of our community, both living here as well as doing their business. And it was a great exchange of ideas and updates. We had an Arbor Day celebration. Councilmember Hill and I attended in Sun Valley. It was like one of those really hot days. You know, it's been really cold. We've had like two hot days. One of those super hot days is when, uh, the DPW team, boy, they planted six trees faster than I've ever seen anyone plant trees. It was amazing. Uh, but that's a great celebration. We've been a tree city for over forty years. So we always look forward to that ceremony. And then finally, um, we were able to meet with the Federated Indians of Great Rancharia, went up, met them on site, and we're delighted, uh, that they're here this evening, uh, again, as we continue to build the relationship with the tribe. So thank you all for listening to the reports. I think it's important that everyone realizes in addition to the dais work, um, your council is out there working for you every single day practically. So, uh, with that, before we get to the consent agenda, I'll take public comment in the room on the city manager and council reports. If anyone would like to comment on these reports. Okay, not seen anyone. I'll close the public comment and we'll come to the consent agenda. I would like to hold four Ds in dog. Just make sure I got the right number. Are there any other items that my council, the colleagues would like to pull? No? Okay. Um, so with four D aside, I will, let me see about this. I'm sorry. Deputy City Clerk, should we go ahead and vote on the items outside of four D? Okay.
So I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar except for item D.
And I'll second.
Did you want the public comment before or after we do the consent part?
Usually we do it before.
Okay, so we're just, we're just so excited to get to four D, sorry. Um, so is there any public comment on items on the consent agenda, not including four D? Okay, closing the public comment. We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Yor- Yorin Scalati.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries four zero. Uh, four D, this is a proclamation and recognition of Native American Heritage Month. I will read the proclamation and then we hope that Vice Chair Ross will say a few words after. November has been established as Native American Heritage Month by the United States and State of California. It is a time to remember and reflect upon the diverse and rich cultures, history, and traditions of Native Americans to appreciate the past, present, and ongoing contributions of Native Americans nationally, in our state, and in Marin County and San Rafael. This month, also must recognize the atrocities inflicted upon Native American tribes and tribal citizens, but also the various challenges faced by the Native Americans in the past and today. And whereas the City of San Rafael acknowledges the Federated Indians of Great Rancharia as a sovereign nation and the only federally recognized Indian tribe comprised of Coast Miwok and Southern Pomo peoples, its cultural and ancestral territory includes Marin County and the City of San Rafael. It's a government-to-government partnership with the National Park Services Point Reyes National Seashore and works in consultation with the Marin County Board of Supervisors, county staff, and the cities and towns of Marin County on issues of education, cultural resource protection, land management, environmental justice, and child ware, child welfare and social justice. And whereas during this month of November, I'd say all months, especially this month, we honor the Federated Indians of Great Rancharia and this, their ancestral homelands, and appreciate the tribe's continued contribution in strengthening the diversity of our community. And whereas we encourage everyone in our community to learn more about the Federated Indians of Great Rancharia, and we pause to reflect on their past, present, and future engagement and accomplishments. Therefore, be it resolved that the Mayor and City Council of San Rafael hereby proclaim November twenty twenty-three as Native American Heritage Month. That Vice Chair Ross, we would be honored if you would like to say a few words.
Oh, sorry for that. Uh, thank you, Mayor Kate and City Council, um, for acknowledging the Coast Miwok, the Federated Indians of Great Rancharia, and all Native American people on this important month and recognizing the heritage and the value of not just my tribe, but Native American people. I am joined today with several people I'd like to introduce. Uh, first, I'd like to introduce Councilmember Robert Stafford, um, as well as Jean Boullot, who was one of our founding council members in the early nineties with our chairman Greg Saris, uh, who is, uh, also serving as a cultural consultant. Jean is a cultural bearer and has provided a lot of, uh, key sacred site and cultural protection work, uh, specifically here in San Rafael. And then also we're joined with our Tribal Heritage Preservation Officer, Buffy McQuillan. I represent the Federated Indians of Great Rancharia. We're over fifteen hundred tribal citizens. And directly as I stand before you in acknowledging your acknowledgement and with all of those that are listening or who will listen to this, I hope that the City of San Rafael with the mission deepens and comes to a deeper appreciation, not as a mission, but as a Coast Miwok nation, as the local people here. My grandfather was an orphan and had suffered through a lot of the different diseases and atrocities, um, that were brought on through impact and changes brought on this landscape and who was actually at San Rafael Mission when it became a place for Indian people who were infirmed, sick, or otherwise. So this particularly is very meaningful to me to be able to stand before you and acknowledge that as a representative for a tribe who is living today, but also for the ancestors who's come before us. I reflect on your comments about the state of the world in terms of all of the atrocities that are happening, especially in the Middle East, what's happened with the violence in Maine throughout our nation. It is very similar to the history and legacy that my ancestors experienced at a point in colonialization and settlement. I am here today because of people like Jean and Robert, my elders, my grandfather, my mother, who maintained their relationship with the land and place that we call home, part San Rafael, Marin County. Because out of the fourteen survivors at the turn of the century who survived from documents that state in eighteen eighty, there were only sixty Coast Miwok people left, that we have been resilient and we have maintained our identity, our culture, our heritage. I pray and think deeply on the words reflected to hope that me standing here on behalf of my tribe is a testimony to the good things in the world when we put together a way, a path to recognize the differences and let that be a recognition of heritage and the gifts that gives us, rather than the division that it provides. I ask the City of San Rafael community members to recognize and to remember that we are in partnership with you. We are all home here today as Coast Miwok people, as non-Coast Miwok people. We love this city as much as you do, and we call it home as well. And I hope to go forward in time that we can find ways to uplift each other and to celebrate the diversity as well as the inclusivity in the leadership that you have demonstrated today. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Did you want a photo? I'm trying to figure out the photo voting thing. Okay, so we should go, let's go ahead and vote, and then we'll do the photo. So is there a motion on item four D?
Yes, I'm happily, uh, make a motion to approve, uh, four D.
Four D. And I'll second.
Uh, moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Yorin Scalati.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries four zero. We're gonna do a brief photo. And we will come down from the dais in a moment because we have more special presentations. We have two. One is United Against Hate Week as well as recognition of Mark Machado. I take public comment before the presentation. So if anyone would like to comment on either of these items before we do the presentation. Okay, we'll get right to it. So the first one is United Against Hate Week. And I will read it, and then you wanted to say a few words after. Okay. So let me go ahead and read this fir- first proclamation. United Against Hate Week twenty twenty-three in support for the agency Not in Our Town. Whereas the United States is a nation of immigrants whose strength comes from its diversity. And whereas it has become all too common to see, hear, and witness racist, xenophobic, anti-Semitic, sexist, homophobic, Islamophobic, and other hateful acts in this country. And whereas deep divisions within our country are the result of extreme ideology, further strengthening, strengthening a cycle of mistrust and suspicion fueled by fear, anxiety, and insecurity. And whereas the Constitution enshrines equality on all individuals regardless of race, gender, sexual orientation and expression, religion, disability, socioeconomic status, education, language, or political views. And whereas the City of San Rafael, we are committed to addressing equality and inclusivity in housing, criminal justice, healthcare, employment, education, and all other aspects of our community. And whereas education, compassion, and cooperation are vital to understanding and embracing differences between people. And whereas the City of San Rafael wishes to support the agency Not in Our Town, a leading anti-hate organization that serves hundreds of schools and communities across the country. They stand against all forms of prejudice and work to build bridges to foster inclusion and equity together. And whereas together, our community can stand united against hate, not just this week, but every day. And I'm sure you've seen the posters downtown and throughout our community. So therefore, I, Kate Collin, Mayor San Rafael, on behalf of the council in our community, proclaim November twelfth through November eighteenth as United Against Hate Week. And I know Councilmember Kurtz wanted to say a few words.
Yes, thank you. And thank you for reading the proclamation. So I've been part of United Against Hate Week and Not in Our Town. Oh, gosh, I can't even remember how many years, seven, ten years, um, when I was on the school board as well as when I joined the council here. And every year, I think, I say that this resolution is so important for the time we are in right now. Whether, whatever year it was, there was always something going on that we had to really bring these words to light. Um, this year, though, it's really personal. I'm Jewish. I'm an active member of the Marin Jewish community, and I'm a member of the Bay Area Network of Jewish Officials. It's part of Banjo, which is, um, JCRC, Jewish Council of Relations. Jewish Council Relation Commission Committee. Thank you. This year, I specifically need to call out the increase of anti-Semitic attacks in the United States and across the world. Since October seventh and the terrorist attack on Israel, the global Jewish community has been the target of these anti-Semitic attacks locally and more aggressively at colleges and universities. As a mom of a kid who's at, uh, Boulder, I know firsthand what he's facing right now. Our community is angry and scared and feels alone. As my friend Julie Fingers writes, "We are in a losing battle effort to respond to the overwhelming, terrifying moral confusion and antisemitism brewing and bursting around us. Expressed in the silence, ambivalence, complicity, or worse of so many of our leaders, college presidents, public officials, writers, singers, and influential people from all walks whom we've always admired, there's quiet." "We weren't silent when Russia attacked Ukraine. We proudly displayed the Ukraine flag. We weren't silent after the murder of George Floyd or Beyonna Taylor. We marched. We learned and we continue to learn. The Jewish community needs our friends and allies right now. Freedom of speech and expression are foundational principles of our country. But when these principles are used to promote violence, hatred, or discrimination on the basis of religious beliefs, national origin, or ancestry, we need to take a stand. United Against Hate Week's message is clear. We reject hate of any kind and believe that building a safer and more equitable world starts by working together." Thank you.
Thank you for your comments and thank you for all the work that you've done. I know you're helping with the screening and other activities that, um, our community could participate in to really connect with United Against Hate Week. So thank you. Okay, our next proclamation, really, we're gonna like take a turn here, is, uh, celebrating Mark Machado in here.
Come down.
This is a serious.
I know, I know. Well, you know what? It is serious stuff, but that's what makes a community work, right? We have the serious and we have the, wait. Okay, they're hiding up. They'll come up here for the photo. So it is such an honor to have Mark Machado here, and I have a proclamation, uh, for him as well. Tells you a little bit about him, and I know him personally. I'll probably ad lib as I go on. Um, "You have served on the Park and Rec Commission for the City of San Rafael for twelve years, from November twenty-eleven to October of twenty-three. And whereas you've served in advisory capacity to the city as a commissioner and become an integral part of the commission, attending numerous park tours, neighborhood events, and taking great pride in representing the City of San Rafael." And that is absolutely true. You know that we've talked about the city together over the years, and you have always had the same deep love, um, and accountability and responsibility. You have brought that to the commission. You've been doing it a long time because you served under Mayor Gary Phillips and myself, several city council members, three city, city managers, and provided advice to three directors of the Library and Rec Department during your tenure. And whereas you provided advice and insight to the city in relation to a variety of projects and initiatives, including the integration of the Library and Recreation Department, the creation of the Citywide Park and Rec Master Plan that we recently completed, the allocation of Measure A funding, the development of departmental policies and procedures, improvement to beach parks through private partnerships. That's right, remember that? First one we did. As well as a development of major improvements to park and rec facilities, including the renovation of Victor Jones Park, Pickleweed Park, Albert Park, Sun Valley Playground, and installation of a new restroom at Bret Hart Park, and numerous upgrades to many other parks. Whereas Mark has served the City of San Rafael, this is really the best sentence of the whole. They're all great sentences, but this is, captures you with honesty, grace, diplomacy, and great integrity. Making certain along the way that each solution advanced and improved the quality of life in San Rafael. Now therefore, I, Kate Collin, on behalf of the City Council and our extended community, do hereby proclaim our sincere appreciation to you for your many important contributions and community service to the City of San Rafael. If you could join me in applause. Would you like to say a few words?
And I, I'll be, I'll be quick. You know, I said twenty-five, twenty-five years ago, I, I started, uh, on the San Rafael U Soccer Club. And I was the, the, the field coordinator, and I worked with Jeanette Sotomayor at, at Pickleweed for a long time. And I think since then, that was kind of a natural transition, right? And I got to coach a lot of the teams down there at Pickleweed, and I saw the community, um, the guys, there's probably eighty to a hundred guys that want to get on that field every night, right? So we're kind of trying to hold them off because we want to finish our practice. But the fact of the matter is that field only lasts six months out of the year, right? So the other s- six months has got to rest and it's got to grow. And so the thought was maybe at some point in time during my tenure here that we would get that turf field down there, right? And so we're almost there, and I, and I, and I, and I hope it really happens. You know, I got to serve under, um, Carly McCart. I got to serve under Susan Andrade Wax. And then now, uh, Catherine and Craig, and I, there's some big things happening, uh, for Park and Rec, uh, and Libraries, uh, coming up. And you got some great leadership, um, so, some real. for Park and Rec and libraries coming up, and you've got some great leadership, some, some real pros. So I really appreciate being part of, this being part of my journey in life and being, and being part of all of this. So from the bottom of my heart, I thank you.
Thank you. In that ribbon cutting, when we have it on the synthetic turf, we will make sure that you are front and center. Let's do a photo. Okay. And we're moving along, and I do actually, as part of the consent agenda, we did approve the fire commission appointments, and I want to recognize that Brian Waterbury is here. Thank you, brand-new commissioner to the fire commission, so thank you. Just wanted to tell you how much we appreciate that you applied in that, and you're now a part of the commission, so thank you. Okay, so tonight's agenda actually got a little light. So we had our first public hearing. It was removed from the agenda. And it is to a date not certain, right, city manager? So we will be coming forward with the date once we know it was the Marin Sanitary Service Rates for 2024. So the next item is the city council meeting commencement time. And I am delighted that our Madam City Clerk is able to zoom in childcare issues. So thank you for being so flexible, and I will turn it over to you.
Thank you so much, Mayor Kate, members of the city council. Of course, I wish that I was there, but hopefully next time I'll be able to see you. My name is Lyndi Lara. I'm the city clerk of the city of San Rafael. And the item before you this evening is a recommendation to introduce an ordinance that would change the start time of our city council meetings from 7:00 PM to 6:00 PM. Just for some background, the last time this meeting time was changed was back in 2011. It was changed from 8:00 PM to 7:00 PM for the purpose of being aligned with other boards and commissions. In the last few years, we've been seeing an uptick of our boards and commissions meeting at 6:00 PM and changing from 7:00 PM to 6:00 PM. But additionally, we're hoping to reduce the frequency of meetings that are held late into the evening as well. The city council would still be holding closed sessions prior to the meeting and then the occasional special meetings. But, and at times, they will have to return to closed session following the meeting if they weren't able to get business done before our regular meetings, if this item was approved. And doing some research in other Marin cities, San Rafael is one of three cities in Marin that still holds their meetings at 7:00 PM. Other, other cities are varying between 5:30 and 6:30 PM. And if it was approved this evening, it would come back to the next city council meeting for adoption. And then it would go in, if adopted, would go into effect in 2024. The recommended action before you this evening would be to waive further reading of the ordinance, refer to it by title only, and introduce the ordinance amending section 2.04.10 of the San Rafael Municipal Code concerning regular meetings. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you so much. Any questions? Okay, not seeing any questions. I will open the public comment on this item. Anyone in the chambers like to comment on this item? Not seeing any public comment, I will close it, and no questions. I will entertain some comments as well as a motion, so if you can give both, that would be great. Vice Mayor.
Well, we just changed the time as well, so like over the weekend. So it is, we really started at 8 o'clock, I guess, before. So I, yeah, I think this makes sense, and, and I think it's nice that we can, we will also have more energy as we start a little bit earlier as well, so.
Yes, thank you. Any comments, Councilmember Bushy?
Quick comment, we recently made this, well, in the last past year, we've made the same change at the Central Marin Sanitation Agency. We moved from 7 to 6. And it works much better for those of us coming from work to get started early so we have a shot at getting home at a reasonable hour. So I support the ordinance change and look forward to seeing you all at 6 o'clock.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz, can you comment?
I also support the change. I can't imagine starting at 8. So very happy to see it start at 6. I think it's also important for the staff. These meetings take so much work and time from the staff, and then they're expected to come right back to work the next day. And so I think it's really important for everyone, as well as with the community, to be able to have it earlier.
I concur for all the reasons given, and that way we're not finishing meetings at 11 o'clock or later. That gets very, very late. I would entertain a motion on this item.
I'll make the motion. Let's see, recommended action. Waive further reading of the ordinance and refer to it by title only and introduce the ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Deputy City Clerk, could you read the title of the ordinance, please?
Yes, thank you. An ordinance amending section 2.04.10 of the San Rafael Municipal Code concerning regular meetings.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jorn Salati.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries 4-0. Thank you so much, Madam City Clerk, for calling in. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
And then as we did in the last, last time we met in person, we have moved our open time for public expression to after the agenda items. So we are now to that part of our meeting. So if there are any comments from the public on topics not on tonight's agenda, which we would have already discussed, is there anyone who would like to approach the council? Not seeing any, I will close the public, public comment period. We have the San Rafael Successor Agency. Are there any items to be held from the consent calendar on this?
Nope.
Nope, not seeing any. I will open the public comment on the San Rafael Successor Agency agenda. Not seeing any public comment, I will close it and request a motion on this item.
I move the consent calendar.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call from Deputy Agency Secretary, please.
Member Bushy.
Aye.
Member Kurtz.
Aye.
Vice Chair Jorn Salati.
Aye.
Chair Kate.
Aye, that motion carries 4-0. This was definitely a unique meeting in that we had a lot of recognizing what's going on in the world and how we're going to stand for inclusion and showing up for each other. And we're done before 8 o'clock, if that clock is right. Is that clock right? That clock is right. So this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.